I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you could all join me for a moment of silence for men and women in uniform. Thank you. Called the meeting to order at three minutes after six. Sorry, I got carried away here. Adjustments to the agenda, question and answer period for solar array, anything else?
Yep. The plant chief asked, requested that you authorize him to sell the vehicle that we just approved, a new one, so the replacement. The one we're getting rid of. He thought he could get more money selling it outright and putting it to bid because there's a generator on it that's feeling good.
So this is the currently heavy rescue?
Heavy rescue, yeah. He wanted me to bring that up for him.
Other consent items?
Yeah, you could do that. And then the next one would be Public Law 219, motor vehicle. They state to authorize an increase in the fees for registered motor vehicles from three to five dollars for three registrations and four, six dollars for new registrations. So we'd like you to address that and, you know.
Where do you want that?
You can do that under new business.
It's marked to number six.
Sorry?
It's marked to number six.
Oh, number six? Consent, okay.
Okay.
And then we have just some estimates on what does it cost to clean up the land a lot. And we're going to, Tom scheduled it, so we're gonna start November 4th, 6th. To finally, to get going, but we wanted to make sure you knew what it was gonna cost because it's expensive. Eventually, we'll get the money back. What happens is that once that's done, we'll bill the owner and if you don't pay, we file a lien over so much time, a couple of years. And it kind of quiets the property, same as the tax acquired.
Whole business, is that where you want that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
The deal is a long time.
Okay, anything else?
No.
So question and answer for the solar array. I missed that part, where's it going?
Mr. Nick here.
Here.
Okay. I'm good. I'm good, yeah, I'm good. Let's, um, let's just do that right before the public to speak. And we'll get the other stuff out of the way first, okay? Because we have some updates to do with solar as well. So next up, review and approve the minutes of October 7th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the October 7th, 2019 regular meeting minutes with any corrections or additions.
Moved and seconded. Any comments, questions, all favor? Okay. So we'll move right to the question and answer for the solar array part now that we get that part out of the way. The, for those of you who are interested in where we're going with this thing. The committee met this last week, this last Tuesday, and had a very informative meeting and some direction on where we're going to get information more to us. This is obviously gonna go on for a little bit. And I'm gonna ask Cindy to chime in, but I'll hit a few highlights. There's only a certain amount of capability for an area to implement solar into our system. Fair statement? Okay, I gotta keep checking with my colleague here, make sure we don't make any mistakes. But we have a couple of places that have been looked at and have desire for location to put this airport and sewer treatment plant area up there. And they're two very distinct different places because one has FAA requirements and other is just the town requirements. And there's lots of interest in doing this now because it's, it's, these guys can make money, the town can make money and whatnot. With the airport there, we heard a presentation from Guy Rule about a feasibility study they wanted to do that would cover the entire annual cost of running the airport, plus, which is inclusive of electricity. So there's an opportunity to set a system up there. The differences in, is one, they own all the equipment. And I'm pointing to this gentleman out here, who I don't know his name yet, but we'll get to that. But those companies own the equipment, they maintain the equipment, and we get a portion of what profit they get out of it in the form of a check. Goes into the grid and the town benefits on our total electric bill, not just a singular component of the town's electrical bill. Can be applied to everything. We good so far? We're doing, that feels so good. And with that, John, did you wanna throw in anything that you've heard lately? And then I'm gonna ask Tracy to chime in too, because she...
We invited three people to come. Except only one to, right? One of them couldn't make it. One of them, I think we give you letters.
Yeah.
Shane had sent us a letter. It didn't sound like he was gonna make it. He was working with the company that does this. I was kinda concerned at his letter because it indicated that it would cost so much to wire this thing to wherever they are, into the grid, that it wouldn't be worthwhile for some reason, I don't know. I mean, that's kinda what I saw in his letter to us.
It was brought up to us by Dennis Markey, who serves on the committee, that the circuit from Main Street up to the airport is not the greatest. That was the quote. I don't know if it means it's not big enough, I don't know, but he's saying there's only so much it can hold.
Maybe that's, maybe that's what Shane was, he's familiar with our area.
Yeah, well, that was news to me, that in terms of the location may, is good, but it's not the greatest in terms of the circuit.
But we've got a, we've got a big station down off of Depot Street. But to get it from wherever to there, I thought, that's what I thought Shane might be talking about.
Yeah, that might be.
But anyway, he's not here to ask, so.
Sounded like he wasn't interested.
And then we did invite a company that was, had a booth at the MMA convention, and I guess they never resurfaced.
Did you have anything else you wanted?
Yeah, that's just, that's one that with it too. I mean, I spoke with the people at the MMA convention and they were very interested then, but like I said, I haven't heard anything back from them. So when they're out of Augusta, maybe it's too far in the business, yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Do you wanna chime in on anything?
Yeah, basically, I mean, Nick has done a presentation here before. And they've got a business model that's different than what Shane and Steve Hall proposed because we eventually have to purchase the array. Is that correct?
So not necessarily. So you could, you could actually just stay in, you know, in the agreement, the financing agreement where you're just purchasing electricity from the, from the investor that owns the system for 20 or 25 years at basically a discount to what you're getting for your credit for solar production. But you do have the option to buy the system if you want to, just no obligation to buy the system, so.
So even, so we can have an indefinite agreement beyond 25 years where, where the investor owns and maintains the array?
Yeah, and usually it's a 25-year agreement, it might be 20, and then it might have some opportunities for extensions if you decide you wanna extend it. So no obligation to buy the system. The, I think the main, the main difference, it sounds like the other projects would be just that you'd get a monthly payment for leasing the land space to, for the solar project. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, so, yeah, we'd get, we get a per acre lease reimbursement. They'd be subject to personal property tax and then we, there'd be a credit on our electric bill.
Oh, okay, very nice. Yeah, and so, so this is similar, you would, you would get a credit on your electric bill and the idea would be to, to make sure that the credit you're getting is, is greater than what you're paying the investor for that solar electricity. So to provide some savings to the town on your, on your operating expenses. And so that's one option that we offer, which I presented on last time it was up. We also do offer, offer lease agreements. So if you just, if you just wanted to, say you didn't have enough electricity consumption to, to really, weren't a really, a big array and you wanted, you wanted to use more land space for solar, you could lease your land space for, you know, for maybe anywhere from eight hundred to a thousand dollars an acre per year to a, to a, a solar project, basically. Usually those are 20 to 30-year agreements.
And is, is that something that your company facilitates as well?
We do, yep, yeah. I didn't focus on it, or I don't even think I mentioned it during my last presentation, but it is something we work with as well. And I would say that, so what's kinda nice is it doesn't have to be an either-or situation. So you could, you know, pursue one project where you're leasing land space for, for a larger system and then another project where you're entering into a, that financing arrangement. I mentioned the power purchase agreement for, to offset your electricity consumption.
So when you come and do your feasibility study, assuming that all of the parameters are still in place, meaning we have to give you exclusivity, as I recall, that was one of the initial issues with any of the companies.
Yeah, so typically before we come and do, you have full site evaluation, we would ask for maybe a letter of intent. Or, or that, or that you begin your process to, to select a, select a company. So you begin the competitive bid process. So you could put it out to request for proposals if, if you wanted to go with the power purchase agreement and you wanted to look into that. A lot of times municipalities will do an RFP and then we'll do a, and do a full site evaluation for that, for that RFP response. As far as the land lease goes, that's right, we, so we typically probably can give you an idea of what we can offer the town. But, but like you said, there's, there are some steps to, to really determine the feasibility of that site. And that is, that involves some investment. Investors start to spend, to spend some money on developing it. So that's why we usually ask for exclusivity, so like an option to lease, basically, would be what we would ask for for a lease agreement.
So given the fact that one of the linemen that retired, supervising lineman, Dennis Markey, is a member of our community, made the comment that it's a poor circuit up to there, or it's, it's not a great circuit. I don't wanna create worries here, but is that something that you all look at in your?
Yeah, absolutely. That would be one of our, one of our, one of the main things that we look at. So it'd be interesting to find out a little more, some more details on why it, why it is a bad circuit or not a great circuit for solar. But usually, what, one of the first things we'll look at is the capacity on that, on that circuit or on that line. So how much solar it can accept. And if it's limited to, you know, a certain amount that, that doesn't kind of reach what we're looking for for, for system size, then, then it would be a quick way to, to realize that it's probably not gonna be a site that we would pursue.
All right.
And that would be as simple as a pre-application, a pre-application to C and P.
Pre-application that?
Yeah, pre-application to C and P, so it's usually costs, I think, like three hundred dollars and you can, you can find out. They, they give you the capacity of that line typically. But it, it would probably be worth having another conversation with that gentleman to, to hear a little bit more about why the, why the circuit isn't great. If it's a concern about capacity, then the pre-app would answer that. If it's a, if there are other concerns, then it, then it would probably be worth it. That, it might not answer that, the pre-application might not answer that question.
You had mentioned if the investor wanted to allow us to carry on beyond the 20-year mark or whatever that magic number is. How long have you all been doing this, by the way?
We, we've been around for, for a little more than 15 years. We started in 2003. We started working with power purchase agreements in 2010.
Okay, so have you had different investors along the way? I'm, I'm leading up to something, so.
Yeah, we have, yeah. We, we were an investor for a while. So basically, basically, the, one of the keys to finding the right investor is that they have the right tax liability so that they can, they can take advantage of the tax incentives for the solar project, which the town can't. So, so Revision, we used to have that tax liability, we used to act as an investor. We recently became employee-owned and we no longer have the right tax liability to, to invest. So we, we do a combination of working with kind of more national, commercial investors and then more local, regional impact investors.
Do you have investors pull out?
We have, we have not had that happen, but if they, if they did, their, basically their responsibility would be to find someone to take, take their place and, and continue the power purchase agreement. There's not much of an incentive for them to, to leave the deal because they, basically, they've paid an upfront cost on this investment and it's, it's generating an annual revenue for them. So if they, if they all of a sudden leave, then they're not gonna, they won't be getting that return on their investment that they're expecting.
Well, one of the things we have heard in loud and clear is that the town of Ransley has a history with one particular very big corporation called Time Warner.
Yeah.
Who came in here and did all sorts of wonderful grandiose things and they're not here anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
And all their equipment is still here.
Yeah, so, so that's, so that's a great point. So with, with our investors, Revision, we're the company that would install. So they have the finances and they take the tax, they take the tax credits and then, and they receive the payments on the electricity. But Revision is the company that's responsible, basically, for performing the operations and maintenance and being there for any technical issues that come up and servicing the equipment. So we certainly intend to be, to be around for, for the next, next 30-plus years. That's why we, we became an employee-owned company versus, versus doing a different type of transition like selling to, to a, to some sort of investor that wanted to grow us more quickly. So we're definitely, our, our goal is to be a sustainable business and around. So if, even if, one, one common thing that might happen, that happens on a larger scale that I wouldn't anticipate with this scale of a project is investors might sell to, they might sell the PPA. The terms stay the same, but it just becomes, it just becomes someone else receiving that, that return on investment. That, even if that happens, they're still using, basically, Revision, who's, who's kind of more of the, the partner with the town and the investor's kind of in the background, if that makes sense.
Anything from the board, John?
Maybe you could comment on this. One of the persons that we invited to come was, says, "Projects which move forward first in the interconnection process will have the most success in securing an interconnection into the electric system. In addition, these projects will be the first to secure net metering credit arrangements with host customers. These two factors are the reason for the incredible increase in interconnection requests." And he goes on to say, "Central Main Power has seen over 200 applications in the last six months. Prior to that, they saw fewer than 20." So then, then he goes on to say that the ARFQ process would even go and slow the whole process down and we should really think about selecting a person right away to get, make sure we don't lose out and end up on the bottom of the list.
Yeah, so, so that is mostly true. That, and it relates a little bit more to the, to the land lease option, which I'm, I haven't, I have not reviewed the different site options for, for the town. So I'm assuming that that's, that would be a larger project in the, in the scale of anywhere from a megawatt up to five megawatts. Whereas I imagine a project for the town that offsets the town's usage would be maybe anywhere from, from 25 to 200 kilowatts or so. So, so that, that relates a little more to the larger scale projects. And there certainly is expected to be, once you reach those larger scale projects, they require certain reviews and studies by C and P. And that, if you're, that requires a little bit of time. And when there's a long queue like that, it, it increases the amount of time that it requires. Additionally, if you have, say you have a, other landowners in the area that are on the same circuit as your, as your property that you'd like to lease for, for solar, say they're considering solar as well and they get an interconnection application earlier. They're in line first to, 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 basically to have their, their project approved. And if it is approved, then, and it fills up all of the room on that circuit, then the town's site could no longer be viable under current conditions of that circuit. So it'd require upgrades, basically. So those are, those are the two reasons why it might, it makes sense to, to try to move fairly quickly. If, if you don't anticipate a lot of other, other solar projects going on in the circuit, the biggest timing issue would just be this, the interconnection study and the amount of time that that takes.
We have, we have about 400 acres of sewer treatment plant. That would be, 200 would be available.
Very nice.
For this use and 700 acres at the airport, I believe.
And are there, are there three-phase, three-phase lines, power lines to both sites?
We have three phases up to the sewer treatment plant.
Yeah, very nice. So that's a, that's very helpful. If it's single phase up to, if it's single phase, for, for the projects of that size above roughly 200 kilowatts, it, it, it requires three-phase. So it's great to have three-phase close to the site. Within, within basically half a mile, it's really helpful. That's great.
I think the town would be interested in, you know, to get the room to.
Yeah, that sounds like, that's great.
I drove by Pitt Field the other day and I never saw that before.
Yeah.
Chin Bros. site, oh my god, it's huge. It keeps on going.
It is. So that, that would be about two times the size of kind of a max system size that, that, that Revision would probably consider for, for the town. So we would probably look at, you know, if you wanted to, say you wanted to go with a lease option, we would look at probably like 30, using 35 acres, 40 acres of your land space. But you, but say, say you find out you have two good sites, one at the airport and one at the wastewater treatment, you could do, you could do two.
Two.
Yep.
So we could do one to just put into the grid and one to fuel our own needs, like at the treatment plant, at the airport?
Yep, yeah, exactly. Or, and you could do, or you could do two, yeah, you could do two of the larger projects as well. And, and one thing to clarify, so you might have had, so those are the two different scales that Revision works with. The, the one that offsets the town's use, that might be 25 kilowatts to 200 kilowatts, just, I'm just kinda guessing. And then it could be larger if the wastewater treatment plant is a big user. But, and then you have the one megawatt to five megawatt where basically the, the, the solar company would lease the land space or the owner of the array would lease the land space from the town for roughly a thousand, a thousand dollars an acre per year. They would, they would then have a system that sends electricity back right up to the grid and builds up credits which are then sent to other, other customers in C and P's territory. So it's offsetting other, other customers' bills that are, that are also in C and P's territory. You might have also spoken, spoken with someone who offered a, a third scale or even larger scale, like a utility scale project that, that like you're saying, just sends electricity right out to the grid and you get wholesale rates for that, they get wholesale rates for that electricity, so they get wholesale payments. And, and that's just, that's a scale that Revision doesn't really work in, but it, it would be one that might be, where they might be interested in like 200 acres or so. So, just to, just to kind of clarify.
In any scenario, I'm hearing from you, the town would be able to lease the property, but maybe up to a thousand dollars an acre. Which is significant, and we have a big.
200 acres times a thousand.
And of course, all the equipment would be taxed at personal property rate, right?
That's right, it would. So, so the, the systems that we, we are installing are, and, and I'm not as up to date on this. So, so we could, I could give you a better idea once I check in on it. But basically, there are some policy paths this year where the systems that are in those first two categories that I described, not the utility scale, but, but the, the, either the one that serves the town or the lease, those are property tax exempt. However, the state is responsible for reimbursing the town for a portion of the lost property tax.
Fifty percent, I believe. Usually they have a 50-50 deal on anything.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. So, and I haven't, I don't know, I don't, I'm not up to date on the specifics, but I think, so you should still get some revenue, but it might not be as much as, as the utility scale project.
And then there's also, if we just put it out on the grid, we would get a credit from the power company.
Yep, yeah, exactly right.
What was that, Joe? Dave, you have anything? Tony?
Just, one other member of our, of our solar group, that was in, we, we met last week. He installs small residential systems and it was his advice that we definitely look at the lease option. And, you know, just given, he says, just a lightning strike, it would take to, you know, you know, affect inverters and other expensive periphery equipment. So I, it seemed to be that's where our initial interest is. You know, we're not a huge energy consumer like some of these larger towns, but.
Yeah, yeah.
So if, if that is, is something the board asks to move forward with, I mean, it's, it's no money out. The town doesn't spend anything on a feasibility study, doesn't spend, and doesn't put a deposit. I mean, it's, it's your project. You would want some kind of confidential commitment agreement for us to look at and where you would quote us per, per, I mean, what would, what would be the next steps, I guess, if?
Yeah, so the next step, so probably the next step would be if you decided that you wanted to look into this with Revision, we could take a, a look at the, a look at the properties that you're interested in remotely and get a sense of, okay, this checks, you know, these boxes and we're, we're interested in these sites. And then, and then we would get, we would basically probably do a, wanna do a site walk and take, take a closer look. And then the next step of kind of, of committing and starting the, starting the development work would be basically a site option. So that, which gives, a, a site option with also the, the land lease language. So, so it gives, it gives us the option of leasing that land space per the, the lease that's provided with the site option. And it also lays out, you know, what the, what the, what we agree upon on a, on a, on a lease enough, an immediate lease enough. And other terms of that. And so, and that would be, one of my colleagues, who would, who would probably be, probably be the one working on that. So we would, and we would be more than happy to take a look at those, those pieces of property, letting you know if that's what you decided to, to look into. One, one thing to point out with the power purchase agreement is that while the investor owns it, they're responsible for all operations and maintenance of the system. So if they, say if there is like a light, like a freak accident, like a lightning strike that, that damages the system, that's, that's the investor's responsibility versus the town's responsibility. Anything else?
No, we've, yeah, just want, I guess there are a couple of applications that have been submitted that could affect, could affect us.
In the area, okay.
Yeah.
On behalf of us?
Ahead of us.
Oh.
They, they, yeah, yeah.
I'm wondering how soon you could do, go up and do your work or come up with something. Because, well, I guess this has been a lot of competition for this stuff, so.
It's a land grab, so we're told.
Yes.
So it's, you know, the people that are interested in doing business, they, they've made their move.
Yeah, yeah.
They've, you know, so they've made their decisions and, you know, it's, it's time to act.
Yeah, yeah, the other thing that I'm 99.9% sure. Yeah, yeah, the other thing that I'm 99.9% sure is that a long-term lease on town property is similar to purchasing, so it would probably require a town meeting vote. But that would have to be, you know, a hearing and a special town meeting.
Forget for that as well.
Is this a special town meeting?
Perhaps.
I heard that before, a long-term lease.
So, so the, the Verizon tower or the Verizon lease didn't, was that, that, that wasn't presented, was it?
No, we own it. We own the tower.
We own the tower, okay.
Paid for it, but we own it and they lease it from us. So, um, that's different than land.
So, so we should be able to move pretty quickly? I, I, I just haven't spoken with my colleague who kind of heads that stuff up. So I, that's why I'm hesitant to, to say any specific timelines. But I could, since I'm in the, I'm in the area, I could swing by those sites and take some photos if that's, if that's all right, I could do that.
Arrange with Kate, they give you a grant too.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
That sounds great.
Would you participate if we put it out for an RFP?
You, you know, I actually don't know if we, if we would do an RFP for, for a land lease. I'm sure, I'm sure we would. I don't think the land lease is, we don't see that, uh, an RFP being the path as, as, as typical, sorry, we typically don't see that being kind of the path for land leases. Basically because just the, we can, we can typically let you know what, I imagine, one of the most important pieces of information that you're looking for is, you know, what we can, what we can pay you for that, for that land on an annual basis so that you can evaluate who you'd like to go with. If you did put it out, I imagine it would be a fairly simple response and I'm sure we would respond. And we would definitely respond to if you did a power purchase agreement as well. So I think, yeah, we would certainly be interested in that.
Anything else from the board? Anybody out front? Any questions? One more question for a, what's the lifespan for a, one of these transfer switches that you typically deal with?
Transfer switches? So like, so the inverters?
Inverters, trans, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, so those are about, usually about 20 years or so is the expected lifespan, 15 to 20 years, I'd say. The, they, they come with, they come with a five or a 10-year warranty or expected to last 15 to 20. The panels are, are, come with a 25-year production warranty. And studies have found that they'll last, they'll be producing for four years, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Appreciate you coming by.
Thank you for having me, yeah.
All righty, yes, indeed. Stick around, fireworks begin in a minute here. Public to speak under non-agenda items. Okay, thank you. Boards and committees. Look at that. Number six consent item, sewer reserve. Stevens Electric and Pump Service, 7,617, et cetera. Want us to pay the bill?
Uh, if I may speak, this is actually part of this alarm system upgrade. This is more towards the level tracking portion of that where, once again, that bubbler system that we currently have that keeps, helps us track that level in pump operations, has proven that it is finicky. So I'm hoping that with this approval, we can step away from that system, upgrade to transducers and be more reliant on a more reliable system as we have on pump station one. It'll all be the same in regards to how they monitor levels within the pump stations and become more efficient, effective and should allow us some more time in regards to response of those alarms.
Questions from the board?
So, no more bubble system?
That is the goal. That is a hundred percent the goal.
Cool.
Dave? All set? Need a motion?
Make a motion, sir?
Where's it coming from?
Make a motion, we accept the proposal from Stevens Electric and Pump Service Incorporated for the submersible transducers, et cetera, for the amount of 7,617,57 cents.
Second.
Where are you finding it from?
At the reserve account. Please.
I should add that to the motion.
Yes.
Could you?
To come out of the reserve account.
Yeah.
You okay with that, Sidney?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Oh, thank you. Rangers Lake Snowmobile Club, Casino Night Authorization.
Good night.
Stay awake.
We've seen this one.
Can we get a 10-year permit?
We're trying to come in earlier this year with our stuff.
Do you want a motion now or are we going to discuss?
I make a motion that we accept the application from the Rangers Lake Snowmobile Club to approve Casino Lake Vault Mountain Camps, Rangers Lake Snowmobile, Jan, uh, from 6pm to 11pm on January 23rd, 2019.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Comments, questions? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you.
Can I just say, last year Tracy was very helpful to us. The gambling commission decided to stop our casino night four days before it was to take place because they didn't have our letter that you had authorized for consecutive years until further notice, they wouldn't accept that because they didn't interpret your language the same way. But Tracy was very helpful, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, thank you.
All set? Next up, Winter Road Maintenance Agreement, Dallas Plantation. Authorized the Town Manager to sign.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we authorize the Town Manager to sign the Town of Dallas Plantation Winter Road Agreement?
So.
Moved and seconded. Comments, questions?
Is this new? It is, I mean.
This has been going on for years.
Well, I know, I just, I don't recall an actual agreement. I mean, I know it, it existed, but just couldn't recall that.
It may not have been as official before.
Maybe not.
All in favor? So moved, thank you. Truck sale, we need to authorize the fire chief to sell outright the, uh, rescue truck. Is that what we're calling it?
Head rescue.
John?
Yes.
I don't know what it's called to tell you the truth, it's the one that we.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's their rescue, it's a rescue station truck.
It's a square one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we authorize Chief Bacon to broker sale of the old rescue, uh, fire rescue vehicle privately. Is that what you want it?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Next up, the, uh, it's a vote, yeah, did you oppose? No, okay, good. Next up is the, uh, John, give a little explanation on the Bureau of Motor Vehicle, Department of Secretary of State and what they've done and what other towns are typically doing.
The legislature passed LD 917, an act to increase municipal agent fees for motor vehicle registration. The law allows municipal agents to change, to charge higher fees, higher service fees for registration for motor vehicles from three to five dollars for renewals and from four to six dollars for new registrations. And, um, we just published a list of all the towns and what their reaction to this was. As you can see, the vast majority of the towns on the, the three pages, they all voted yes. Some of them voted no and, and for reasons like the council's going to review it in November. You know, they changed the effective date, the effective date of the law was September 19th. So they, some of them are doing things differently. Couple of them outright, outright voted no, we're not raising fees, but small minority. You can see for yourself the reaction to, uh, that's money that stays in town but, you know, when it goes up to the counter and process the registrations.
Any questions?
Do we have any idea how much this would take in? Anywhere near? Okay. Cause I, I was reading the paper today and I can't remember what town they figured it was, 10 grand, but then they voted your town, so.
Who's been a bigger town for that kind of money? So we, must've got what, 1,200 people that full-time residents? Maybe, you know, half of that at least, so 1,200 dollars?
We're not getting rid of them.
I think 19, so I can up that.
Oh, well, it's all coming from.
Any other questions on this? Ethan? I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we, now it says three to five, so from three to five and four to six. LED 917, increasing all municipal agent fees for motor vehicles from three to five and from four to six for new registrations.
Second. Moved and seconded, raised from three to five and four to six. Any questions, comments? All in favor? So moved, thank you. We received correspondence from Kevin Sinnet, thumbs up.
Do we need to, do we need to vote on LD 1528 as well?
I didn't think so, but maybe we do.
Is that the second one?
Uh, no, these, these are.
That's the state, is that?
That's registration.
They already voted to.
We've got nothing here, uh.
There's a reason.
Okay.
Registration, transfer.
Yeah, it's already done.
Thank you.
No problem. There's a thumbs up in the Highlander, this was brought to our attention, specifically the Public Service Director for keeping both the Rangers and Aquasic docks open, allowing the town to host the last motor coast visit on October 9th. Thank you for that thumbs up and all that involved. Also thumbs up for the big dig with M&amp;H Construction fixing the hole at the town boat ramp. Whole business.
Good job.
We had a public hearing at five o'clock for land for parking owned by Lou Brochue on Depot Street and, what's the name of the other road there? Moose Run?
Moose Run.
Moose Run?
Moose Run. It's listed on our maps as a continuation of Depot Street.
Yeah.
Shows up into the development, you know, the subdivision. The run itself is not public road, it's private road.
Correct. So in the public hearing, it was well-attended by a couple of folks. And, um, we've been looking at lands for parking for a long time. And each one of the public hearings that have to do with economic development or, um, how do we better our community or whatever think tank we put together, public parking is a big issue in every one of the meetings. If it doesn't come out first, it comes out a close second as to what I want, it needs to. So we have an opportunity to purchase this land. And what's, what we need to talk about now is whether or not we're going to do this at a special town meeting or we're waiting on other opportunities to vote for this, yea or nay. What is your, anything you want to add to that, Joe?
No, just that we have a purchase and sale agreement. We have the public hearing, it all fully explained.
Oh, I didn't mention, the land is, we had several options, the negotiations have gone back and forth five months? Oh, five, five or six months with Mr. Brochue. So we've, uh, he wants 250,000 for it. Uh, we've had it looked at, appraisal done through Jamie Eslak. It's sort of a drive-by appraisal, not the full-blown appraisers appraisal. Uh, but given Jamie's experience in that, and he came up with a significantly lower number of what Mr. Brochue has given us, two options. Cash price of 250,000, excuse me, a price of 250,000 dollars, pay him 25,000 dollars a year, no interest for the next 10 years. Or secondly, 200 and.
205.
205.
Cash.
Cash price, one-time payment. Be here and be done.
Which if we borrow it for 10 years, the, at a 4% interest rate, it would be equivalent to.
250,000, 249,000 and change, so it comes out to a vote. Same.
So, uh, at the hearing, we showed that Depot Street is actually a little dead-end street that goes right into the parking area. And it goes right to where the tree line ends. That's about half the property. The property's like four acres. And, um, Jamie Eslak did some research and showed us that there was a parcel that's, one acre parcel sold for 150,000 several years ago, six or seven years ago. And there was another parcel, 122,000 for a half acre in the area. And he's offering this to the town for 250,000. Bottom line is, the town's going to be here forever and the town's going to forever need that parking lot. We need the park it to be able to do most anything about town, that might happen. And that's, we're using it already, we lease it from Mr.
Brochue.
Brochue and, uh, how long have we leased that? Quite a while?
Five.
Maybe, if that's.
And we've leased it for what he pays on taxes. And so this would be, uh, you know, quite easy. The other thing to keep in mind is we just, uh, in this year's budget, we budgeted 50,000 dollars for downtown improvements. So the first payment could come out of that 50, you know, 25,000 out of that. And then each year becomes a budget issue for 25,000 dollars. It's a lot easier to handle than, than borrow.
This whole business is under the special town meeting dates, uh, bullet point. Also, we have to talk about borrowing or road funds. So, do you have any more on the parking?
Yes.
Oh, shoot.
I have quite a few questions.
Yeah, sure.
Um, I live on Depot Street, so that's why I feel most of the time I'm asking. But it would be, what you're looking at is exactly the way the parking is right now. The, the lot and then the one behind it, right? There's no additional land that you'd be purchasing from him, it's.
Oh, no, just his entire lot that goes.
It's a four-acre lot.
It actually goes around Depot.
Goes right up to where Jimmy is building, right up to his property.
Okay, so it would be along Depot Street there, so it would cut into our subdivision?
No.
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 See, there's the packet on the table over there?
Okay.
So is that the paper right there looking at?
And the, the lot that sold for 150 is waterfront property, is actually, I think, Jimmy's property. And it was the only lot left on Depot Street to purchase. So I think that's why it was probably so expensive because, and I think the two, the 250,000 dollars, I live on.
The 150,000 dollar lot they were talking about is down on Main Street.
Oh.
That's what they were talking about.
All right, and the other one was Jimmy's?
No, no, the other lot was the lot across from Ferber's house. The comparatives that he did.
Okay, I thought you just said he did the comparative to the one that was sold on Depot Street.
Did I, no.
And it's the last piece of property that was, well, property that was sold is Jimmy's, Jimmy's lots, that was the last piece of property.
So do you, do you have this map?
I see it, yeah.
All right, so if you look at Depot Street, there's actually a dead-end. See where it dead-ends in the middle of that lot?
With that pink?
Yeah.
Where you live is actually referred to on the deed as Moose Run.
Yeah.
And it's not Depot Street, it's all private. And it's not Depot Street, it's all private. And I don't know how far in you live, but this, this is just that lot surrounding Depot Street, which just right into the middle of it. So the other interesting thing is the end of Depot Street that shows up there is the tree line. Everything behind that is all trees. So what's being used right now is like half of that lot.
So we always thought that the subdivision, we've always included property that's after the snowmobile trail, where our sign, road sign, our association sign begins.
Yeah. No, you know where it actually begins? Right there where Moose Run intersects Depot Street. Comes right down, right around the corner, I mean, that's all, Moose Run is all part of the subdivision.
Right, right.
It's called, on the map, it's called Depot Street, everybody just stole the time except that it has Depot Street.
Right.
Not really Depot Street, Depot Street's that little dead end.
Depot Street actually goes into the parking lot in the back.
Okay.
So it's like a hundred and ten feet into that, the dead end.
Okay.
So a real Depot Street, the DDP Street. And Joe did that development around and it goes from where you turn right, all the way into the past year.
Are you pointing on enlarging that at all or just leaving it as is, or is it too much to enlarge?
The interesting thing is, the way this is right now, it's really not very developable, that whole area, because the, when you look at, it's all commercial zone, but it has setbacks from the roads and from side property lines. So what's left really to develop, it's very difficult to build anything on that, as long as the road jets out there.
But the town.
If the town were making a parking lot out of it, that's irrelevant.
But they could level that entire lot if they wanted to.
That entire lot can be used for parking, eventually when we raise money to pave it and.
You mean the entire parcel of land or just the street and the circle?
Well, right now, what's being used ends at the dead end of Depot Street.
Right, that's why I questioned you.
The rest of it's all woods.
Would you develop the woods or would you leave the woods to the woods? I mean, what, just make a future?
Yeah, depends on what the future holds, I mean, if it, if the parking lot's in full use and needs expansion, plenty of room to go into the woods away.
Jamie mentioned there was quite a bit of wet area in there, I didn't really get into look at.
Yeah.
That bottom left, so if you, you drive into Depot, that bottom left inside, there is water.
By the common area.
Right, there is some water in there, but that upper of Depot, Moose Run, Depot down to.
That's good.
You can still use it, that'll, I mean, Jimmy brought in some material, obviously, but.
Has anyone offered up any less than two?
Yes, we did.
And, because I'm sure nobody else is going to buy it?
He said, no.
So he'll sit on it.
Well, that's the problem, if it's gone, it's gone.
And the conundrum is that the town doesn't have parking. We have the IGA, but that can be sold, and we have the one on Pleasant Street, but that's, nobody really knows it's even there. So this is like our Mecca for snowmobile parking and ATV parking.
I mean, it's great the way it is, I don't mind it the way it is, it's always been a parking lot, you know. As a property owner, I'm fine with, with what it is. I don't want to see any trees cut though, that I have to look at a parking lot at the end of my road, and I'm sure the person that just paid four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a house on that street doesn't want to look at it either, so, I don't know, I don't know how, I'll bring it to my, I'll bring it to our association.
He's actually asked maybe buy a buffer there too, to keep it.
Yeah, I mean, that wouldn't be bad, and I know, I mean, Vice President Snowmobile Club, I want people to have a place to park when they come into town, but.
We're not going to go and clear cut it. We might clean it up and make it so that it's easier to park and maneuver and.
And maybe pave it.
Leave a buffer along the road so you can't see it.
At the front, so that it's like car parking outside.
Instead of just the strip?
Yeah. The parking area as well.
You probably stand a better chance of having your, having your parking, having things be negotiated more reasonably, if the town buys it, I would think, rather than someone with their own interest at heart. So this might be good for the association.
Well, you could place asking, okay, fuel, like tanks.
Are you, does this have to go to?
Yes.
Public?
Tell me.
To go to a town meeting.
Thank you for that comment.
Do you have this in your packet there?
I still want, yes, I do, thank you.
So if you, if you look to the right of Depot Street, you can see if we cut any trees out, there's still plenty of room to have a buffer of trees before you hit Moose Run.
Yeah.
So that could be expanded along that whole edge and, and at the end of Depot Street too, without you having to overlook the parking. A twenty-foot buffer would completely cover anything that's in there. So there's a lot of room for expansion, but right now, that, that's the area of what's actually being used. And the lot in the front and the lot in the back.
I'm the only one besides Jimasi that's able to vote any of this, the whole street, because everybody's second home owner, so I guess it'd be really screwed no matter what, but.
Okay, that gives you a good idea of what we're really looking at there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else from the, from the board? It's Dixon, hold on a second. It's Dixon, what's your thoughts, special town meeting?
Well, two birds with one stone, Derek.
There'll be more specials coming, bundle them up. So, sir.
We have, John, since, we got a couple of people here, why don't you just, one more time, a brief synopsis of our road dilemma?
Well, for several meetings, we've discussed that to really finish the four major projects that we have grants to help with each one of them. We're going to need three more million dollars because of the cost estimates that are coming in. Every contractor is through group, so we're going to have to go to a meeting for that to be able to finish those projects. Now, we've had several meetings, several discussions, several, you know, looks at the estimated costs. We've done a lot of the road projects that were originally voted to do and there's still several more to do. So we're looking at finishing Bald Mountain Road, which comes with two ninety-five thousand dollar grants to put in crossings across two streams. And we've got grants for those from the DEP. And so that estimate is about four hundred thousand to complete that. We put the base coat on the road, we have a lot of the ditching, ditching's done. And the finish coat after we put in the cullets. Not cullets, they're more like the ball bridges than cullets.
Yeah, the box, big box cullets.
Yeah, the box cullets. So that's one project. Moon Lake Road, we have a five hundred thousand dollar main DOT grant, we have a five hundred thousand Northern Borders grant. And we're trying to get more money from those projects. The original estimate was seven hundred thousand. No, I'm sorry, that was for Allen Street, the original estimate was.
One point one.
One point, yeah, one point one million for that Moon Lake Road. And we, we got bids come in for Allen Street, Allen Street was seven hundred thousand, original estimate. The low bid was a million seven hundred seventy-four thousand, the next bid was two and a half million, the next bid was three point two million. Which we all kind of, you're going to be kidding me. And so we've actually started, select and authorized to start that project. And we're only going up to Cross Street right now, I believe. Because it was so long waiting for federal grants that, you know, it just ran out of construction season up here, so. The other project, we have an eighty-twenty agreement with the state to put a sidewalk from, up by the IGA all the way down to town. And we're looking at, what, four hundred thousand, I share that? So, do you think?
Between a hundred and twenty-five and.
Hundred and twenty-five. State put a hold on that right now because the bids came in so high on the, on other projects, they had to cancel a lot of their work this year. That's pretty, what's the other one? Oh, so anyway, we, we took some of the unit costs from the bids that came in on Allen Street. And we multiplied the unit cost, the current unit cost by what's needed for Moon Lake Road. And those bids to do that come in two point six million, when our original estimate was one point, one point one million. And there's a million dollars that's state, from the state government and the federal government, that could help us or not. So we're short on, on that, we're short on all of these. We had, we still have a million, one hundred thousand, no, we minus what we spent this year.
So you have one point three.
One point three minus what we spent this year.
Our share of Allen Street currently, so you're looking at probably, let's just say, six hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand dollars left.
Okay. So we have enough to finish Bald Mountain Road. And we still have to put the finished pavement on Park Street, Lake Street and Paul Street. So, at, at any rate, we figured that we're about two, three million dollars short on those four projects. And there's still a long list of roads, smaller roads that can be done over time. So, to give you an idea of how those are going to be done, the agreement the town voted on was all the excise tax money goes into a road fund to pay off the debt. And so the debt on the original loan is two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars a year. And the excise tax that was collected was three hundred something, to the point of the average collection, after paying off the debt, left us with eighty-nine thousand dollars a year in additional excess rep, uh, excise tax. All of that money can be used toward these smaller roads to finish them all up. The problem is we have timelines, the Northern Borders Grant has a requirement that we have to have all the money in place before they'll release a letter saying we can begin the project, which we can't start because we don't have the money, obviously.
Thank you.
A good summary, I guess, of where we are, so, and the other, the other issue is, if we wait until regular town meetings, that's in June, and by the time you get the bid packages out, you award a contractor, we're in the same dilemma we're in this year, where we can't, we lose three quarters of the construction season. So, and this year, we couldn't get started because we still waited for the Northern Borders Grant, which finally came in. We were still waiting for the grant that provided the Water District with the money to do Allen Street. We were still waiting for the DEP to give us the grants for those box cullets, and it took away every, the construction season. So there's deadlines on these grants and I don't know how long they can stretch it out, so if we had to wait two more construction seasons to, to do these things, so.
What's that, John?
This is a rocket science, these roads didn't go bad overnight and we knew it when we applied for these grants, I'm still confused, I mean, of our long-range plan. You shouldn't be in a three million dollar problem, somebody's not doing the math right, I'm figuring out, because this doesn't happen, I mean, this is a business. And this just doesn't happen in your business, or your business, or my business, I mean, we have issues like it, but there's something not happening quite right internally. I understand dates, times, and grants, but it's still a long-range plan, you have so much money, you plan that money, you apply for the grant, your money's accounted for, I mean, it's not, this isn't grammar school math.
I, I beg to differ.
I'm sorry, but no, a three million, you don't throw the town, bring your three million dollar road problem, you've done that before and it doesn't go over well. It's piss poor planning, I'm sorry.
No, it isn't, it's a construction cost, went through the roof, look at the numbers.
So you don't do it, you don't, you can send a grant back, you can only afford to do what you can do, I'm sorry, but it still has to be, it still has to be run like this, I'm sorry.
Well, except that, you can be sorry all night long, we have other issues that you haven't been privy to coming to this board. And to suggest that collectively, everybody's not doing their job, that's a little bit of a slack.
I didn't say that, I'm just saying, if you can't throw the townspeople a three million dollar issue in one year, it just doesn't seem fair. For the people, for the small little lady that lives on Allen Street, I mean, I'm, it's just, I don't know, I'm just, I'm a rural street, I just feel bad for the little lady that her taxes.
See, again, you're making assumption that we're not concerned about.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I didn't mean to direct you, I'm directing it at you. This is, where else do you take it? This is why I'm here.
Right.
That's the only reason I'm here. I'm not angry at anyone, I'm just concerned that, that's all.
Okay. We've had people in here telling us.
I don't, I don't need any bitterness, I'm just worried about throwing this at townspeople, that's all, I'm, it's a little.
We had somebody in here wanting us to borrow five million instead of three, because he didn't think three was enough. So, you try to sell three million, okay, fine.
I just worry about it, that's all.
And that, we've, we've discussed that as a board, I mean, there's, there are concerns, I mean, I think the, when the Moon Lake Road project was presented to us, the engineer at the time did an estimate based on what he had, and it's far short than, you know, what, what's.
Fell short for a number of reasons, she's spot on, Dave's spot on, fell short when, when the previous road commissioner put his estimates together for future projects. He had no anticipatory knowledge that, that tarring would triple in cost in three years. He had no knowledge that the cut, so, in other words, it's where we used to use a million dollars per mile, it's now a million six. So all of those estimates, five years ago, don't apply to today, and that's where our shortfall is.
And if it's a million six today in five years, it's going to be over two million dollars, easily.
Well, I, I think you, you, the point I agree with is that this could very easily get voted down. I mean, you, you, you push a town meeting down, and I, and I get where you're coming from with the whole construction timeline. Don't do it this year, I, you know, I, I just, I think, I think we're, we're jeopardizing, um.
I'm sorry.
Well, if they don't vote it in, we don't do it anyway.
When you say don't do it, there's a whole lot of it on this list. But we may do a quarter of it, a half of it, a third of it. We can't just don't do it, it still requires that meeting to talk about it, decide what is it, because something's it, we can't just throw it all away, not in my opinion.
No, no, I never said that, I just.
There's a lot of little stuff that we can come up with the money to do for here and there everywhere, it's the big million six and the whatever, you know, up on Moon Lake Road, I mean.
Allen Street was a, was a huge eye opener, I mean, we, we priced it out at a fifty, and the lowest bid was one seven and the highest was almost four. I mean, that's in three years.
And also depends when you put it out there for the bid, if you do it in the middle of winter, they don't have a bunch built up, but if you wait till June to go to town meeting, and then they're already got work to do, they're not, they're not going to give you.
So we have these special town meetings we should do, get it bundled up, I say bundle, that's what it takes, let's bundle it up, that way we're not just coming here on one little referendum. What are we making it out?
We think we're going to get a better praise if we come and put it out in wintertime when nobody has work versus the summertime when everybody's already overbooked. And that's part of the reason our costs went up.
Yeah, I mean, they even admitted, you know, the reason I'm charging this, because I have plenty of work, I don't need to do this job right now, so.
They didn't, Water Book didn't want to do it, but if you're going to hire me for three point six, I'm in.
Yeah, so, anyway. Kind of is what it is, but.
Yes, I do.
Nobody likes it.
So do we have someone in place that can honestly pull apart this Capitol Roads? For years, we kept saying we were going to do a Capitol Roads plan, but all it ever is, is a spreadsheet, there's no actual plan behind it. Do we have someone in place who will make sure that, we're checking these numbers every two to three years, if that's when they're changing? We can't throw a ten-year plan, a ten-year Excel spreadsheet out on the table and think it's going to sit that way for ten years.
We know that.
Do we have someone in place who's going to kind of watch? Do we have someone in place who's going to kind of watch those and gauge as it's going to change? So that we don't find ourselves in a 3 million dollar deficit when we come up on road projects?
Every time we do a road, we adjust our numbers. And it was like one year, it went from 7.50 to 1.6, so within two years on Allen Street.
Based on the fact that we weren't keeping an eye on that.
No, based on the fact the state has the same problem for the last three years. The con, they've been overridden with their construction costs. It like spiked.
Right, but some, if somebody's keeping an eye on that market, we won't get blindsided like this.
Well, just to comment on that, the, uh, the way we keep our eye on it is like we did on Loon Lake Road to estimate that based on the most current bid we got on another project. Because the unit prices should remain relatively equal. So when we're able to estimate the next road from what we just received for bids, I mean, how, how else can you do it? I mean, we do keep track of it that way.
See, right now we're basing Loon Lake on what we're doing on Depot, on Allen Street right now. That doesn't mean that's what it's gonna be next year. It certainly isn't what it's gonna be two years from now. We can't predict the, the expenses that go up, the price of oil.
I think it's safe to say, your question, the answer is no. We don't have somebody whose specific job description is to take a peek at that at intervals that make sense to you and me. But what we do have is an ongoing dialogue with people who are working for us on other roads. And we believe, I'll tell you honestly, I know of two people, because I happened to be looking at her, when we were told what the increase was, and I think we both went, oh my God, we're not even close in terms of numbers. And that was in budget season, so we, so it is being.
Is there no regulations in place for road construction for, I mean, there's nothing at the legislative level.
Are oil driven, petroleum product driven?
Labor driven, equipment driven.
Fuel, insurance.
Hot pot.
Yep.
God.
I think what we've learned from this, or at least I have, will never go a five-year projection again because it's too volatile. You can't hang your hat on a five-year projection with road costs, and we did that.
I mean, you can put in there what needs to be done, but as far as the cost goes, you know, you're not gonna do it this year.
You might get it on a three-year, because we have that construction loan.
Three years, we're, we're, we're in it with five, but you're right, you did it on three years.
But we normally spend a year on roads, you know, like 2, 3 million dollars.
We, we did, we, we borrowed like 2 million dollars to do a bunch of our roads. And we still get like 89,000 dollars of that 2 million left. And we've done a tremendous amount of them, but now we're in Depot Street, we're hitting Loon Lake Road, we gotta finish Bald Mountain Road. Bald Mountain Road now we have to put in two box culverts that are like, are defined by the state as to how they get changed. Because we have to have lizard bill to walk through them.
I thought you said you had 6.50 left.
Six, yeah.
If you look at it in regard, yeah. And now you spend that money. Technically, right now you'd have 600, 650,000.
So we have enough to do the culverts, which we have the grant money for, to help. That's something John said in one of the other meetings and, and well, a lot of town states, whatever, are guilty of it because it becomes easy. Is the paid roads get left behind because we were willing to dump 50 grand to do this one and the town seats were doing something. They're happy that we didn't spend a million dollars. And the two big ones, the two biggest ones that'll last are Loon Lake Road and Allen Street. Allen Street, we're already pretty deep into that one. And Loon Lake Road, we just happen to have free money for it. So if it comes a conundrum, yeah, we're gonna borrow this 2 million dollars. It's not gonna be the most popular thing in the world, but are we gonna accept the free 2 million dollars? And tear the bandaid off and get rid of these two monstrosity roads? And then in a couple of years, it'll soften up a little bit where we can dump 20, 80 grand and, and get rid of these small. It's just what order you wanna do it and how much risk do you wanna take? How much more expense it's gonna get if we don't do the two big ones soon.
Nice group.
Yep. You're welcome. All right, I know there's still some consternation here amongst my colleagues about a special town meeting. Are we at the point yet of agreeing that we need one?
Yeah, because we can bundle them. Let's bundle. So we've got, we've got solar.
Pot.
We've got, that's, that's one. We've got roads and, um, and the land purchase.
So tonight we satisfied the public hearing for just the land, and you still need a public hearing for?
We, hang on one second, John, hang on, yes?
We don't need a public hearing if it's an open town meeting.
Correct.
Because that's the public hearing. My other question is why the solar needs to go to the townspeople? We have an article that authorized the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager enter into leases contracts and agreements on terms and conditions deemed necessary and appropriate. See, that's what, that's what I thought. I, I don't think we. I don't know if that needs to go or not.
Not after, you're all coming on the lease. I was concerned about the lease myself, but I wasn't 100%.
Yeah, because that, I, I thought we could, I mean, we're, it doesn't fall under the purchasing policy, we're not buying anything.
Not buying or, or selling.
That's right.
And you're just using land that's not being used, you're making that thing up.
That's right, so it's a matter of whoever can, you know, I mean, so that's one off of us. Yeah, that's good.
So the question in my mind is, are we gonna do a 30-acre or are we gonna do a 200-acre?
They, they decide with their feasibility study.
That company won't do a 200-acre, they'll only do a 30-acre.
Yeah, but remember, we also have a committee that's working on this as well too, it'll bring back more to this board here.
Yeah, but that's what, that's what they spend their feasibility study on, it's like, all right, what, what, what load can these lines handle? And what's already in the system?
It baffles me that the CMP line going to the airport, the transfer station, and the industrial zone are not that good. It's three phases, that's the only place the town may have three phases.
Yeah, but remember, remember, before, but wait a minute, hold on guys. Before this all gets out on the street totally misconstrued, Dennis' comment is about how much more we're gonna put back into the system, not what the current system can carry. That, that's the, that's the quagmire.
Gotcha.
All right, so if he needs a line this big and we only got one this big, then we gotta do something different. And that's the best way to describe it.
Well, then he shouldn't use the word not good.
Yeah.
Because not good, to me, confers that not good.
And what good is it?
The brakes are not good. They'll stop a car, but they're not good.
All right, I'm gonna reel you guys in, let's pick a date.
All right.
Just, just so, Karen, did you have anything that you wanted to bring, Mike, you all set? Kethna?
I'm good.
Okay, well, I mean, we could do this personal now, because you're all, I know everybody's name.
Are we looking at?
Well.
January, probably January.
Yeah.
We need, I mean, you gotta get through the holidays and, and, and get the word out.
Oh, I was thinking Hanukkah, because that Monday would have everybody in town, I'm just joking, guys.
You were serious. January.
Is there, I mean, yeah, you're, you're, okay, January, we all go, does that meet our time requirements, John?
Oh, yeah, it gives us time to get everything ready so we have a real construction season, if it's voted.
So let's get through Vacation Week, which ends on the 5th. Right? Everybody goes back to school the 6th.
Okay.
Help me out here, everyone, we have kids in school.
Well, I gotta look at the school calendar.
The kids are 40 years old, I don't, I can't just spit it out because they change things constantly.
I mean, the sports calendar, they have, they have, um, the school board encourages them to schedule sports or games on Tuesdays.
Oh, okay.
So if we're gonna have a special town meeting on a Tuesday, it should be by a secret ballot so people can come and go.
And absentee.
And, and allow absentee.
What, what, Trish, what'd you mean by open town meeting? Like we used to do or?
Yes.
Okay, so, but if we do a ballot, you guys can, do we have to have a public hearing? Got it.
January 8th is a Wednesday.
Winner winner chicken dinner.
Say again?
Winner winner chicken dinner.
Yeah, that's it. January 8th, Wednesday.
Any school board meetings, I mean?
School board did two Tuesdays. Elvis's birthday.
Who's birthday?
Elvis.
Oh. Elvis, okay. Elvis isn't having cake.
January 8th, everybody.
No cake and ice cream for Elvis. Okay, the 8th.
I'm asking, how'd that look on your case?
I'm good.
As good as it gets.
I'll be in Florida this night and after.
Okay.
You good?
Donny's gonna be in Florida.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are you good with the 8th?
As far as I know, yes.
I can figure it out.
Dave? And you could do like I did.
What?
Fly back.
I'm driving down, but I'll fly back.
Is this an open town meeting or a secret?
I, I prefer an open town meeting because I believe discussion needs to be had. Is everybody else on the board in agreement with that statement?
Absolutely.
Um, and where are the others? I already wanted to.
I've, um, I mean, I pref, I, I prefer, I prefer a secret ballot, just.
We can have a secret ballot.
At an open town meeting, someone can raise from the floor if they wanna.
Because you can't have absentee ballots and stuff.
No absentees, you're right.
No, it's secret. Nope.
And we have to have a public hearing. But that's not the deal.
New school?
You have a problem with secret ballots?
Old school.
I, I just, um, I, you know, middle of, middle of winter, um, I'd rather see people have the ability to vote all day. Dave might be plowing that night.
I'd definitely be plowing that night.
I mean, I mean, how many things did you miss last year because of plowing?
Oh my God, don't even remind me last year.
So it's just a little, it.
This is your chance, what do you wanna do, Dave? Open or ballot?
Ballot.
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 I'm open and you are?
I can go any way of the wind.
Turn roles, no, you can't go either way.
Right, so if we have a ballot, then I guess it doesn't matter whether it's January 8th.
Why not?
You know what, then I don't care about the holidays if it's gonna be a ballot? Because they can come anytime they want or during the day. And, and you can get it done in December, you have a clock?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Do the second week of November sometime when people still aren't, Christmas crazy yet.
Uh, no, we can't.
No.
Can't, not enough time.
There's timelines that are totally different with the secret ballot.
Okay.
For me, for you guys to sign things, we just went through this, Donny.
I know, I know, I forgot.
And to get the ballots printed and all that good stuff.
January.
Okay.
Let's just, I mean, let's give a chance for people to educate themselves and get information out on what they're voting on.
So how many public hearings do we have to have since we're bundling?
You just have to have one.
So we've exhausted, we're all set with the roads, since we've had?
You could add it to a public hearing anyways if you wanted to, to get more information.
Right, does it change now that we've gone into another calendar year when we go to January?
No.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to ask the question.
But I mean, if we're gonna have a public hearing on one, you might as well throw both issues on there and then people can, because you have people that were kind of surprised by those numbers, even though you've had a public.
Yeah, if we were having the hearing next month, I'd say we didn't need to, in January, you gotta, probably have another hearing for both issues just to refresh everybody's memory.
You guys are stacking up your time in January because budget season's rolling in.
Well.
Okay, pick a date.
Back me up on the timeline.
Pick a date.
30 days.
Yeah, 45, yeah, 45 days for the.
Well.
It's actually 60, it's 60 out, it's changed.
45 days for the ballot to be ready.
Right.
So if we stayed with January 8th, which is a Wednesday, and we don't screw up any games on Tuesday, and we don't miss this building, it won't be used for something else that day. Then you have plenty of days before to get all the public hearings in. You're gonna have to forget the fact that we're gonna do the public hearings in holiday season.
Yeah, that's. Can you do the public hearing on the 16th of December at our meeting?
December 16th, I can't see that one. Oh, yeah, right there.
That's enough days.
December 16th and then January 8th is the vote.
That's, that's not 45 days.
No, the public hearing doesn't have to be 45 days. Public hearing has to be 10, at least 10 days prior to.
Yeah. So 11, on Monday the 16th, you have Christmas week and then you got New Years and then you vote. Bada boom, bada bap.
Yeah.
Spaghetti and meatballs.
I don't know, I don't see what the problem is.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah. Clear my phone.
Yep, you need a motion, yes, Trish?
Do you want the public hearing here?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so. And we don't have to deal with the school.
Thank you.
5 o'clock? Yeah. Meeting that night, right?
Yep. Good, anything, we don't need a motion for that, do we? We're all set with that, we're in agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
And then the 8th.
And January 8th for special town meeting vote, secret ballot.
And vote airport, nope.
We're good? All right, thank you. Anything on the new business?
We still got Tom.
What?
I'll have Tom. I'm just recently reading.
For the Lanza thing. We moved it down there.
Okay.
The cleanup.
Let's pull that up. Tom, we've got TBL Enterprises, Quicksland.
So I read, received two of these estimates late this afternoon, so I wanted to throw some numbers together to give you an idea. This is kind of worst-case scenario of what you'd be looking at for missions out of us.
30 grand.
There's two, there's two prices that I do not have on there and waters for the waste management delivery of containers. I'm midway down that second phase of the packet, shows delivery, 225 dollars per can. He said he could do 225 dollars per two cans, too. So that makes that overall cost, if we go with entering, going nine cans or containers, 1,125 dollars. And then MDEP, Main Department of Environmental Protection, they'll oversee the cleanup of the contaminated soil. And they have done some testing on that to see what's in it, so that's probably a cost of about 1,000 dollars. By using the main DEP, they oversee that, they're saying thousands to tens of thousands of dollars rather than going with the environmental consultant group upfront. So, I wanted to put that together for you so you at least have an idea of what the cost is going to be. Hopefully it'll come in, you know, below 29,000. But also, also there's, uh, I've got a guy that's coming up because when we take the stolen deals and ATVs that are not operational, if they're on the site, that becomes town property, there's an individual that's willing to come up and remove those from the site and pay the town. It's gonna be probably 2 to 3,000 dollars for that material. He'll break that down and use it for, uh, for parts and sell them that way. So, uh, 22, so, so we'll give a little bit of money back there. I'm also gonna check with the local guy that does scrap pickup to see if he's willing to come and pick up the scrap metal. Which should cut down on the cost of hauling any scrap metal either to the transfer station or back to waste management. And time will take to load that stuff, so we'll save some money there hopefully. If nothing else, we'll probably have to haul scrap metal up to the transfer station. Should save some money rather than hauling it all the way to waste management. And the town will get money for the scrap metal as well when they turn that in, so, yeah, there's a little bit of money that will come back to town. I have requested, I, I've kept Chief Russell in the loop on this. And I sent him the email last week, I do plan to hopefully have a local law enforcement officer on seeing all three days. We plan to be able to clean up just in case somebody gets squirrely, but, uh.
Any questions, Tom? Thank you, Tom.
Glad to have it going.
I will be sending just, you know, a specific, very precise letter to the Lanzas explaining what situation, and I'll be posting that.
Have you got a real quick update on the other two properties?
Uh, right now they haven't made much progress. I went out to see if Tom Patton was there the other day last week, but he wasn't. So I was planning to call him today, but I'm busy with customers majority of the day. So I'll try to call Tom tomorrow or Wednesday where I've got the boardrooms. And that end, I'd like to see most of those materials off the lot, especially all the stuff he's put out in the building. I'd like to see the walls down by the end of the month.